I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and I welcome to you to the October 28th County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly, and Robert is in the front row with listening devices if you need them.
Routine business, item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move second.
A motion is second to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of October 21st, 2014.
Motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. Any amendments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $895,190.57.
Pay the bills.
Second.
The motion is second to comment on the bills.
Today's bills include 420,000 in large purchases for the highway department and 177,000 in pass-through from 911, or pass-through, but to 911. So that's 600,000 of our bills today.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. The next item is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion for routine actions?
There is.
Motion is second.
Motion and a second. Any questions for Maggie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign health plan administrative services agreement with Avera Health Plans Incorporated. Maggie Gary.
Morning Commissioners, Maggie Gary, Compendium Resources. As you know, Minnehaha operates a self-funded health plan. Several entities assist us in operating our health plan. Currently, Avera provides services for our network, pricing of claims, customer service, utilization management, and case management. We are currently in a three-year contract, which has a 4% annual per employee per month fee, and we are pleased that they have agreed to another three-year contract. Our contract will again have a 4% per employee per month fee, and I'm requesting your approval to sign the administrative contract today.
Any questions for Maggie?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the chairman to sign the health plan administrative services with Avera. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item C is to consider a motion to approve changes to the Minnehaha County group plan flexible compensation plan document. Maggie Gary.
Again, since Minnehaha County does operate both a self-funded health plan and dental plan, in addition, we do have a flex plan, which is self-funded, we're required to maintain a comprehensive cafeteria plan document, as these plans are free tax benefits. I'm requesting your approval to make the following changes to the plan document. First, we need to update the definition of a dependent to reflect healthcare reform definitions. Currently, dependent children are able to stay on the plan to the day they turn age 26, and we'll need to change that to the end of the month in which the child turns age 26. Secondly, we need to update the definition of a full-time employee. Currently, we have our employees at full-time at 40 hours a week, and we need to bring that down to 30 hours a week to comply with healthcare reform. And then lastly, we need to add language to the document to allow mid-year changes for employees who would be enrolling in the marketplace plans. And then also, employees would be allowed to revoke coverage in order to enroll in marketplace or other employee coverage, or if they'd have a reduction in hours, lower than 30 hours per week. So I'm asking for you to make those changes to our cafeteria plan document.
Are there any questions for Maggie on changes to the plan?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, and these changes were to reflect changes in the Affordable Healthcare Plan, to keep us compliant. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Cindy.
There are no application for abatement, there are no notices and requests, and there are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Peckus.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 26622 in the amount of $10,576.92. The applicant has contacted the auditor's office and requesting a release of the lien. Apparently, the applicant and her ex-husband were recipients of benefits from Minnehaha County. They went ahead, and now she is trying to sell the home, since they've divorced, and what was discovered was the county aid lien. They're scheduled to close on Thursday, October 30th, 2014, and the applicant was unaware of the lien until the title company actually contacted her realtor. She is asking that the lien be removed in her name and against the property with no payment. That would leave the lien in place against her ex-husband. And once again, the applicant and her ex-husband were married in 1988, they were divorced in 1992, and at the time of the divorce, there was a lien of $129.56 for fuel and utility assistance, and the applicant did apply for that assistance. Minnehaha County Services and the Public Defender's Office have verified that the ex-husband was the recipient of all assistance associated with this lien after the couple divorced. So the commission should look at this as an attempt to try to free up this property to allow her to go through, essentially going through a close, and these liens weren't incurred after they were divorced. So I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I have a motion to compromise a lien for the full amount and leave the amount remaining against her husband, ex-husband.
And removing it against the property so they can go through the close.
I'll second that. I do have some questions.
Commissioner Barth.
John, in looking at the history of payments, et cetera, on this, there's only one bill, or there's only one county assistance before the divorce in 1992, and that was for $129. Meanwhile, there've been very regular payments of reasonable, you know, $25, $10, $50, $75 for years since then.
Yeah.
So all those payments are made by the now ex-husband?
I'm assuming that, because we don't know.
They...
Okay.
I also have a comment. Oh, Commissioner Kelly.
Okay, the major bill occurred in 1997, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the husband had no equity, no name on the house or anything else? Is that...
I think Mr. McFarland knows about that, but my assumption is that in this particular instance, he had no hearing other than the...
He has...
Very, very thin interest.
This particular ex-husband, because there's a couple, but this particular ex-husband has no interest, never had any interest, in the property that's being sold, that they're trying to sell. The property that's being sold in Garrettson is the applicant plus her current husband, and they purchased that house a few years ago, and in fact, in our research, we discovered that we had compromised a lien for those two with a pretty good payment in order for them to get the house. One of the things that the applicant is talking about here is why wasn't this lien brought forward at the time that her current husband bought the house in Garrettson? And our only answer to that was, that's a function of the title companies, and that's so, this is a totally separate situation with that property.
I guess I'm still unclear, why was a lien put on the house for a guy?
The title company did it, simply because, and that of her name. When the title company goes through on any kind of a real estate transaction, they search our database to see, does that applicant have, or do the applicants have anything that could cloud the title? And in their opinion, this old lien with her name on it, and that from way back when, is a potential cloud on the title. That's why it was noted, and that's why they want to get it removed.
I'm still not following that part of it, because, I mean, they'd been divorced for four, three, five years.
But that lien is still part of the public record, her name was still on the lien account, and we had, again...
Was the lien against her? I mean, was the bill against her?
The $129.
When the lien was first established, and that there was, they were a period of marriage, then they got divorced. However, we never got notice that there was a divorce, and so the name stayed on the lien account, and then after the divorce, all these other liens piled up on there against the ex-husband. That's why we asked for divorce papers and everything else, so that we can delineate where those, who's responsible for those liens. But it was originally established when they were married.
Kirsten.
If I may add something, the only way to avoid this situation, once a lien account is set up, is for, is if divorces were like reported to the register of deeds office or the keeper of the lien accounts, because otherwise, we have no way of knowing ahead of time when a person gets divorced. They have to come in and tell us, because there's no, there's no mechanism for them to, us automatically to get notice of that. So that's why these things happen like this.
So the assumption was she was still married to this guy when he incurred this 15-pound dollar bill in 1997?
Because we never got papers saying she was affirmatively before that, that she was divorced from him. It's a record-keeping issue. Now we know she, she was separated from him, so we know.
And we have the documents.
Yep.
Doesn't seem right. I mean, it doesn't seem right that she should have to go through all this.
And again, you know, it's a function of the title companies, and that, it's a function of the title companies for them to take a look at it and determine whether or not they think this is a cloud against that property, and in this instance, they did.
This particular person has a lien against her of $129.56. I don't think it's right that we move that part over with the whole entire thing. I think we should figure out how we want to deal with $129.56. That's her lien.
That's her lien jointly.
But she's more than paid that with the...
She hasn't paid any of them. All the payments were made by her ex-husband on the lien that he has against him. So I still feel we should deal with part of this $129.56, and then remove the rest of it and take it off the house and leave it on the ex-husband, because those are his bills, which he has been faithfully paying. I do have a motion and a second, just to remove the whole entire lien.
I want to withdraw my motion. I think the statements of the chairwoman has dissuaded me from my motion.
Has been removed. Is there a substitute motion, would it be Ken?
So I guess the motion would be to leave the $129 and, on the applicant, $129.56 on the applicant, and remove the rest from the real estate, leaving it towards the ex-husband.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's my motion.
A motion and a second.
I'll second that.
So I have to make a payment of $129 in order to remove her name from the lien and to remove it against the real property.
Correct. And then the remaining lien will lean again, will stay against the ex-husband and not against the home. So everyone understands?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anyone would like to speak to anything that is not listed on the agenda today, may come forward and give us about five minutes, and I don't see anyone, so we will move on.
Regular business, item 10 is consider recommendation for county aid lien notification and collection services. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we have an agreement right now with the firm to notify persons who hold, who have county aid liens of the existence of those liens and to collect, attempt collection on those liens. That agreement has expired, and of course, we're going through the process of soliciting proposals, and that for firms interested in continuing that service from Minnehaha County. We received on Thursday, September 25th, proposals from two firms, and that who are interested on collecting on county aid liens on behalf of the county. Those were Haugie Associates of Sioux Falls, who is the current provider, and Credit Collections Bureau, also of Sioux Falls. As you know, you authorized us to form a committee consisting of a representative from the commission office, the auditor's office, and human services to review those proposals, follow up with the firms to flesh out any information or questions that we had, and then to bring a recommendation to the commission. You will notice on, in your sheets, there is a bid tabulation form that, or a proposal tabulation form, rather, and what it shows is, I just wanted to remind you, our current collection rate, or what we, what we do is, for non-legal services, we, the firm takes 35% of what's collected, and for legal action, they take 45. Those are the current rates. The proposals that we have, that we looked at, Haugie Associates said 30% straight across the board for both legal and non, for legal and non-legal collection services. Credit Collections Bureau indicated 37% for legal and 27% for non-legal. The notification letter, Haugie had indicated that they would, that would be no charge, the letters that go out to persons with those liens, and Credit Collections Bureau broke it up for us. If we go with their standard letter, which has their notification process, it would, they would not charge us for that. If we wanted to customize the letter, and that to, for a direct pay to us, and it was merely a notification process, they would charge $1.50 a letter, and then any of those funds that did come to us directly, they would not charge a collection rate. They would just simply take, you know, the charge was to $1.50. And that, as you know, one of the things that we sometimes struggle with, with our county aid liens is, is good addresses, because just of the, we have a lot of people who get county aid liens that move around a lot, and that, so a lot of times, our addresses aren't very good. Haugie does not charge, or would not charge, for what we call skip tracing, and then Credit Collections Bureau did indicate $4.50 per letter, and that if they had to utilize skip tracing services. So based on the evaluating proposals, the committee is recommending that we accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with Haugie Associates, our current provider, based on the information that was contained in the proposals.
Any questions for Ken? Commissioner Barth?
Ken, what does it mean to customize the letter? I mean, is it the direct, saying, dear friend, or dear Jeff Barth?
Basically, it would be a letter, the customized letter would have our names on it, and CCB wouldn't even be mentioned on it, as we've talked to them. So it would be a letter that would go out directly to the people, and they would be directed to remit payment directly to Minnehaha County, and there would be no third-party involvement on CCB in that instance.
Any other questions for Ken?
Right now, we, those that are direct paid to us, Haugie doesn't get any on that.
Yeah, in most instances, it depends, and that, on some of those direct payments that we get, one of the things that we do, if we see on the lien account that, we saw that it was turned over to Haugie, one of the things that we do is a verification, just to say, what type of contact have you in fact initiated on this account, if any? If we find that there's been none initiated, then we, we don't pay a collection fee. However, if we do find that that direct payment was the result of something that we sent, or that they sent out, then we do.
Okay. Any other questions for Ken? Look for a motion.
Move for approval, Haugie and Associates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Haugie and Associates for the county aid lien notification and collective services. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
And Commissioners, one thing I will remind, we will bring you the formal contract in a few weeks.
Okay.
Item 11, consider a motion to supplement $1,779.05 from the general fund to the parks budget, ASN 17902, part-time salaries, representing reimbursement from premier event management and Golden West. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. We are requesting a supplement to the parks budget of $1,779.05. That is for parks employees' time in conjunction with one event, and for some damage they needed to repair. And we have received the checks for those.
Are there any questions for Darlene on those?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second to approve the supplement from the general fund to the parks budget. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 13, consider approval of a resolution relating to refunding outstanding certificates of participation, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement, and approving the execution of related documents. Bobbletts.
Good morning, Commissioner Bobbletts from the auditor's office, and the last time we met, we introduced the idea of the refunding, and it was, Mr. Bennigan at that time requested a letter from our bond counsel, Betsy Abbey, to explain what would happen to the 2014 levy, and she has sent that letter out, it's been forwarded to Kirsten as well as Ken. We hope that answered all your questions. Also with that letter was a updated resolution, and I would, what I'm looking for is the action today to approve that resolution, have it signed, and then Tom Grimmon is also here from Dordi Company, in case you have questions for us.
Any questions for Tom or Bob regarding this refinancing? If there are no questions, I would look for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution relating to the refunding outstanding certificates of participation, which will save us about 400, just over $446,000 over 10-year period. The motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks for Tom for coming.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County...
Dorrifens release.
And Barry Dunn, McNeil, and Parker for an ERP accounting system selection services. Monty Wattenbach.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach with Minnehaha County IT Department. You should have the agreement between Barry Dunn and Minnehaha County. If you have any questions, please let me know. If you may recall, we approved the funding mechanism for this a couple of weeks ago. So this is the formal agreement to go along with that.
Are there any questions for Monty? Just sign the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second with comment from Commissioner Bennigan.
Monty, do you have any idea about how long this process is going to take? I know there's an estimate, but it...
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess I don't know the answer to that. I could make guesses, but they're just the guesses.
Is there a chance that you could come back with a response to that? Because...
I can do that. I'll find out the answer to that. Can we still proceed in signing this agreement? And I'll get the answer to that.
Yep.
And the reason I bring that up is I think that our software package is a priority for the county, and frankly, I'd like to have a timeframe put into place so that we can follow up on it.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and the Barry Dunn, McNeil, Parker Accounting System Selection Services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Infrastructure Design Group to prepare the final plans, bid documents, and construction administration services for FEMA category C repairs. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Minnehaha County Highway Department. On September 2nd, you authorized the highway department to hire IDG, or Infrastructure Design Group, to assist highway staff in the FEMA work that we've been working on from the June flooding. That was a preliminary engineering agreement. We've been working a lot with FEMA and IDG to follow up with those projects. I think that we have 13 sites as of right now on our secondary road system that basically consist of riprap grading and mudjacking, primarily around our structures on the secondary roads, which are gravel roads or township roads. This contract is with IDG for final design and construction administration on those 13 sites. It's in the amount of $44,340.50. This is category C work for FEMA, and category C work is 85% federally funded, 10% state-funded, and then 15% county. And so the county costs for theirs, our share of this contract would be $6,651.08 if it's billed out 100%. And we do pay everything upfront, and then we are reimbursed for these costs. So if you have any questions on that, I can answer them now.
Any questions? Look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and Infrastructure Design Group. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 15 is to authorize the highway superintendent or designee to enter into a contract with R&amp;R Construction in the amount of $21,800 to repair flood damage to road and bridge structure 50-228-156, 1.2 miles north of I-90 and 1.1 miles east of Highway 125 on Slip Up Creek Road, Mapleton Township. DJ Boothey.
Again, this is another one of the FEMA projects on the secondary road system, just north and east of the intersection of I-90 and I-229. This project is a project that we had to hire out. It's a little bit too big for our own crews to take care of on their own, and so, $21,800 for the contractor to complete this work. And if you have any questions on this one specifically, this is going to be the same 85, 10, 15% split as the previous contract that we just signed.
Just answered my question. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Did I misunderstand? You say 85, 10, and 15?
Yes, 85% federal, 10% state, and 15% county.
It doesn't matter.
The math doesn't matter.
You're right, you're right. 85, 10, 15.
You expect 110% every...
Well...
Somehow the state will get that.
More than likely. It should be more like 82% federal, 10% state, and 8% county. You know, I don't, I don't know the exact answer to that. There is definitely an error in the briefing memo.
Or somewhere around there.
I can follow up at a later meeting, too.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the highway superintendent to enter contract with R&amp;R Construction. All those in favor, oh, excuse me?
No, I have another question for them.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Barth has a question.
DJ, I appreciate you being here. What's the status of the Eros Road going north from Yogi Bear? Is that going to be...
The bridge, the structured projects, you mean?
Yeah.
There's been several delays on those, and we are hoping that within the next two weeks, we have that road open. Yes, there's, there's been delay after delay with the contractor and the weather and different things that we've run into, unforeseen circumstances with those contracts, both bridges, and so we do hope that they are open, they're well past their deadline. We've done a time extension already. We're looking at more time extension requests, but we're hoping that in the next two weeks that those, those projects are both opened up.
Great, and, you know, we had, we're going to do a different process on the bridge approach to keep that, you know, settling bump from happening, and I know down by, on 57th Street on the bridge going over the railroad tracks, the city just did some major stuff there, trying, I think, to get rid of that bump. How's that new process working for us?
We will be implementing it into our new, new design contracts, our new bridges. It's something that we've, we're kind of working with Minnesota design bridges. It seems like every state has their own types of designs that they're comfortable with, and in South Dakota, we inherently have these big bumps. Minnesota doesn't seem to have as big of a problem, and so we're, we're working with people that are, do more work in Minnesota, and we're going to start implementing those into our designs. We don't have any existing contracts that have that detail into it, but we want to begin putting them in there.
When that Eros State Road gets done, you'll send a press release out, I hope?
Yep, yep, you bet.
We started, one more question. On the Grand Meadow Bridges, I know we had a lot of discussion about, a lot of discussion about those early this spring, and I just wondered if they'd started, because I think there's two of them over there, isn't there?
They have started. All of our bridges are either done or under construction. The two bridges over there, I think maybe two weeks ago, two to three weeks ago, they were started. They should be done. I think that I remember hearing that those are like a six-week construction period, and so they should be done with, by the end of November, I'm expecting.
Okay. Any other questions for DJ while we have him here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16 is consider a request to approve adoption of a policy for the juvenile de... Item 16 is consider a request to approve adoption of a policy for the Juvenile Detention Center in accordance with the Prison Rape Elimination Act, PRIA, and changes to the conditional release policy. James Grabot.
Good morning, Jamie Grabot, Juvenile Detention Center. I need to point out that there was one embarrassing typo in the PRIA policy on the second page. It should state peering instead of peeing. That's been corrected.
Are there any questions for Jamie on the policy? Sorry. I actually found that and I was like, seriously? I had to read it three times, then call Ken about it. Are there any questions or anything on this? Is the Prison Rape Elimination Act is a federal program that we have to become in compliance with by, is it the end of this year, Jamie?
It's, it's by May of 2015, we have to be in compliance. It was originally May of 2014. The governor extended it for one more year. We are implementing, hoping to implement the policy immediately, provide training to our staff, and be audited in February so that we can be in compliance by May of 2015.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jamie on the changes in the, the addition of the rape elimination and the changes in the conditional release? Ken?
Jamie, could you just explain for what the changes in the conditional release policy are as well?
You bet. The existing conditional release policy only allowed for the release to happen at the juvenile detention center. What we're trying to do is eliminate the, the children from even coming to the detention center. Conditional release is used when housing's not necessary for the child, but they want them to see the judge quicker, so they'd see the judge the next day. We want to utilize the reception center as well as the detention center for a place of reunification with the parent.
Any questions? And look for a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the policies for the juvenile detention center. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item 17 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports?
Bob still here? No? Okay.
Last week, I read for the little kids up in Tri Valley, I read to over 200 kids. It was pretty, pretty fun. It's pretty fun, so. Commissioner Bennigan?
I did the same thing at Laura Wilder here in town, and I had four classes of kindergarten students, and I have to tell you that I was never that smart when I was in kindergarten. They're an incredible, ambitious group of kids. It was a, if anybody's ever had the opportunity or gets the opportunity to do that again, I think you ought to do it because it's a pretty warm and fuzzy process.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. I think I had first, second, I had kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade kids, and it was a lot of fun. So, goes very fast. Any other commissioner reports?
Well, I, I do want to bring up, and I'm glad Darlene's here, but I'm not going to call Darlene up. I know that I received a lot of questions from people recently, basically saying, now we can vote anywhere in this upcoming election. And I have to re-stress over and over again that we have to go to our precincts to vote. And I know that the Argus and media have been very good about getting this information out. But as with everything, we've, this community has sent an incredible mixed message. And just want to stress over and over, go to your precincts to vote next week. That's where we're going to be having it. We're not having large voting centers. We are at our precincts. And Bob was here last week to talk about the fact that we just switched three locations back to the other precincts from the, the, oh, the pre-general. And what I want to do is I want to make sure that we get that message out. And by the way, election day is next Tuesday. I know that some people have actually had some questions. Now, that's in two weeks, right? No, it's next week. So, just trying to get that out there.
Yeah. Any other new business? That was new business? Any old business? Ken? Oh. DJ has two.
Never hurts to remind people, because of the election on November 4th, there will be no commission meeting next week. No commission meeting, and you will meet again next on Wednesday, November 12th, and that, which will be the day after Veterans Day is your next scheduled meeting.
Wait, we do have the canvas.
Yeah, we have the canvas.
On Friday.
Which is on Friday, November 7th. It's your regular commission meeting. It will be next on the 12th.
Okay. DJ, do you have a comment? Okay.
Also, just to follow up on the highway items, the rate distribution schedule for the FEMA class or category C work is 75% federal, 10% state, and 15% county.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other things that need to be brought up? I would look for an adjournment for, to executive session for legal briefing and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.